Any in order? Maybe a discussion with the release of 24?
I'd like to add the B I C.
B I C.
Yeah.
Page five, under G one correspondence, letter from Perry. Anything else? So not permission to approve to move second in?
Second.
All of you, if they ever say aye, aye. Aye, aye, so. Any more presentations tonight, February the twentieth evening? Permission to approve if everybody says five hundred minutes. To second it? Second. Any discussion? Here and now. Almost anybody if they ever say aye?
Aye.
Aye, aye, so. This is arising vacant building by law. So Tom, we carry that over because the bylaw officer and law will work on it. We want to see what we.
Um, basically, what I had done some research on, vacant buildings has been a problem throughout the throughout the province and a few municipalities have basically tried to do their very best to work with property owners, more so than just trying to go in and take over and clean up the area and then out it becomes a a feat for the town. In some cases, they've developed a registry that is implemented so that way people are made to to basically keep people's list of items they plan to be working with property. They have to incorporate what their floor plan and their intention to property. They have to include an inspector that will inspect the property, have to make sure things are tied in or shut off accordingly. This kind of a deterrent in its own self to make sure people think that we need to to make sure those buildings are being paid care of. That is an administrative issue. That would require somebody to do that if we had this documentation, which is still not going to be answered all problems, but it may be some more people accountable by knowing that they have the registry in place, there is some lease that will be associated. And it could also allow the building department to be aware of what's of what's happening. I kind of wrote down a little bit of the learnings that I had found. I don't know if you guys want me to read through it or if we're aware, but it's just basically this is an ongoing problem throughout the province. There is no real clear solution that exists of what's happening. It's kind of a case by case basis and the municipalities have to try and work as much as they can with the homeowners of the property so that way they're held accountable. We can simply issue a fine, they pay the fine, problems that exist doesn't solve the issue, which is now we're charging them money and the problem remains. So unfortunately, I think we come up with a cut and dry solution aside from we can either try to adjust the bylaw a little bit, maybe make it a little more clear for people that their responsibilities are. It could be some implementation, it's some administrative paperwork, but then that's a staffing issue to make sure that it's done. In some cases, it comes down to just doing what we're doing and try to work best with the property owners and stay on them to try to take care of the properties accordingly. I'm not sure if that actually clarifies any further, if you guys have any information again. I did kind of do a little breakdown here, but reading it word for word for everybody and that's kind of where I'm at as far as.
No, I would pay attention to paper because they have a huge problem, people that make the problem, so they don't know what to do with the law.
Well, that seems to be the thing, I mean, since I've been working for the town, I've watched the place, the plumbing store basically fall to the ground. And literally as the side opened up and fell down into the into the brush.
Yeah.
This is an environmental issue, I've spoken to the bylaw officer to ask him what they would do in that case and they said they've been working with the homeowner for over a year now trying to get it addressed. Because again, it's going to fall back on the municipality. The town would go in and go there to be demolished, would be cleaning up and put it on the property owner's bill. But if the property doesn't, if the property owner can't pay for it, now we've essentially taken the property from the property owner. And I'm not sure if that's an optic that we really want to go for. Trying to trust from as a type of people that should count.
Yeah, currently it says the building is vacant, but they keep it to a certain standard, secure, we really don't have any.
Yeah, as long as it meets a minimum housing standard, a minimum, yeah, minimum housing standard. If it's secure, if it's not allowing an existing amount of water and engineering, you know, things secure from unwanted entry for residents, it's not dangerous to the public. Really, from what I understand, there isn't a lot we can do as far as enforcement. However, if it does pose a problem or a risk to the surrounding neighborhood, you know, kids begin to imagine that those changes in that area. But for the most part, the building is being maintained to the point that it's not a health or safety risk to the surrounding area. It doesn't appear to be a great deal that we can do other than just make sure it's safe.
We're looking at three or four buildings, two or three I can tell what's going to happen with the water problem. The others, we have a lot.
There's not a lot of vacant buildings in town. One of the, I think it was a councilor in the H R N area feels that just due to the property values currently right now, that in a little time it'll all sort itself out because no one, with current property values, no one wants to leave the property without falling to the wayside, you know, just deteriorating, you know, the property value of it. So they seem to think that in a little time it'll sort itself out. Whereas if you put the, you know, extra rehabilitation in or other other measures, are we really paying the law? Are we just putting a lot of extra time and effort in and not really able to do much more than we're currently able to do right now?
So you don't have a total list of how many properties in the town?
In the town, I do have to look, I'm sure there can't be many right now. I can think of maybe three off the top of my head, pretty close, but there's I can't see there being too many actual abandoned vacant properties, so I think I'm hopefully they've ordered like a, some I think an eight seasonal, there's one I think just down the street here that's.
I think we had one on Green Lane, there's one on Carpenters Street, and there's also one on the Racket. The burn house there. So I can figure it out.
Yeah, so again, there's not, there's not a lot that we can take with the number of facilities or residences in the town, there isn't a lot.
There is a definite difference between vacant and unoccupied and abandoned, so the burn house they were in the last time.
Yeah.
Just for a short talk.
Yeah.
Well, you can't say that's vacant.
But they originally had their tallies and kind of on there and carried on. You know, they didn't, they just came through.
So we're going to take the toilet four off the roof on the very top. The call, it says, I knew, kind of suspected that's where we were headed because I listened to the rest of the talking, it was tough.
That's sort of smack of hiding under the problem of homelessness and getting buildings and being strong once in two thousand before two thousand nineteen. But yet again, there's still big packs on, so it's none of that to worry us.
No, that makes it much easier than it was. Any last comments?
I guess the thing is, we need to there is a difference between being abandoned and just being vacant. Or seasonal is another issue because it's not occupied certain kind of times in the year, but there's still the mutilation and stuff, so. I think you may have to add to the bylaw those type of definitions just so that you know what we're talking about under the current bylaw. Because it's a, because it is an abandoned building, which my understanding for H R M or C D R M most of them are banned, people just walk away from it, they moved elsewhere and just not looking after it. And so.
The C D R M, well, there's two, so there were two places, you have one set aside, but the other side is abandoned, it's a building.
Yeah.
So you can't repair or do anything to the entire building, it's half the roof is falling and the roof is up.
Exactly, now they show you better one of those.
Yes, but I think if you're going to go to those terms and definitions, then I think you've got to put I don't know, you've got to put timelines on it, but you can't, you can't create another loophole that says, well, it's seasonal and then at the end of the season, well, it's temporarily, you know, don't make it so you can just walk between titles and keep going for years on end.
So is the registry, did I suggest the registry? That way we maybe can pull that in, what you just suggested. They have to prove that, they pay here.
I've been trying to currently get a copy of the registry somewhere in the province and see what that looks like. My, I'm not trying to pass it by, but I recommend that we send the municipal office because that's where the building permits are, which where the building inspector is. They would have the ability to monitor this documentation as it moves forward. It just seems like it would be better in that location as opposed to here, if this was the registry to be monitored by the right people. They just seem like the building department would be there to keep talk. That's just my personal opinion. If the registry does come to fruition, that it'd be something that the municipality would be able to monitor since they are permitting body, I believe.
Just a question logistically, really, is is there a mechanism if they get issued a building permit? Do you know automatically or do you have to tell it out of score?
And that would be, that would be the thing, you'd have to be a site monitor, some arrangement, that would be that once that is done, either the building department would notify me that this time has passed, has this person done X, Y, Z. But they would have to be authority to also inspect the buildings to enter into premises, from what I understand. So the building department would have a little bit more authority and grounds to inspect that sort of thing than I would. I can, I can check more on certain violations of the house at the exterior of the property, but on the inside, that's different, the building department has easier grounds to get in, from what I understand.
The fire, exactly.
Yeah, exactly, so we're not, we're not.
But if the property owner tells you they plan to fix it up, there should be a time on it, on when. Yeah, it's, if they get a permit, the permit is due in one year. Right, so if they don't do it within that year, the permit, then you know that the goods might have remained, right? So a building permit and a development permit are on the proof for one year, well, once you make an issue.
But there's no way, there's, you say at the end of the year, then I just go back and do another permit, right?
That's right.
So I keep it going for her, which is, I think, some of your frustration.
Well, and my frustration lies in the fact that if I, let's say the ten year office for relevance, I purchase that property and I'm giving the fine to a genuine violation. And what I understand is they pay the fine, they pay the dues. Now I've got to wait until I either see the plate comes in or I notice the violation remains, then I give them another fine. It just seems like as long as they really wanted to pay, you know, the monetary price for it, we can keep doing the song and dance all the time.
Yeah.
Doesn't really hurt the problem, it just now means return of thought about the nature of it, it's not really very optically there.
That's cases, you know, a couple of them.
So for me, it was how can we resolve the issue so it doesn't just perpetuate itself and become an ongoing issue? How do we hold the homeowner accountable for the property and put it on writing, at least them accountable for what they've agreed to do? And the only thing I could think of was to involve the building department, inspector and registry where they have to be accountable for the things that they write. This document on paper, it's going to be signed by the building department. And the problem is trying to get a copy of this from somewhere in the province, I don't know which legislature that has this implemented, so I could have a starting point to know about that completely, instead of trying to develop the registry structure.
Have you looked outside of the province?
I have not, I've tried to stick most of it from the province and I've searched it every single night, but I don't really have good seed elsewhere.
Would there be any other D G A prevent us or assist us with that? We can develop a registry, talk quietly, you know, basically become part of our bylaw.
They commit to bylaw on required to the registry part of things, but I guess to try and answer all the point, I get your point, that's what we do. And but there is going to be a time that they get another building permit. And the thing is, is that if the, say, the building permit lapses, right, expires, and there was work that existed that needed to be done in order to keep that building safe, secure and things like that, then if that hadn't been done, then basically the next gap could there not be a dangerous and untouchable order to remedy those issues, right? So, you know, I think we can red wait for, you know, basically if they have a they get a secret building permit to deal with the issues and that buys them a year to do it, right? If they don't do it in a year and they have not done anything, then basically it should go to dangerous and untouchably cited as such based on those things and then issue the order for them to remedy, right? If you don't have to go and get another building permit, there will be time limits on the order, right?
So they need to do a little bit more homework on that, also look at the bylaw in regards to abandoned, vacant, seasonal definitions of their subject. That's kind of what we're missing there, yeah.
Yeah, I think, you know, an abandoned building is is one that, you know, you're almost losing ownership or the owner, he can't get a hold of it, right? They moved on, they've gone somewhere, you've got no forwarding address and also you mentioned taxes, the taxes probably aren't being paid either, right? Because once you lose contact, so that then will become tax sale, in a position for tax sale. Could be somebody that'll want to pick that up. But I'm not sure if we have any bank to
play you this several. C D R, C D R, I didn't like the calls, it's been under the years, so they just can't afford to deal with all the, you know, abandoned problem. People who have the money. Oh, yeah, they can, the rest of them. Yeah, the money from demolition, you know, you saw the tax bill, why you don't do what the taxes? Which at the end of the day is a type of, problem with us, we have these abandoned buildings, sixty nice residents, and we can't have that, so. Does that seem, you normally the work of the definition in the registry?
Yep.
Okay, well, I started. Start. First out, the Marcy yard. It's happened, yes, definitely. Yeah, it hasn't happened, we're on hard break, back this week. Fire goes on a wonderful, so, yeah. Leave it there.
C L report. Okay. We're the development officer, one development permit was issued last month. Seventy six Water Street, which is for the first floor, office space in the front and short term rental in the rear. Building inspection, previous month, there's five building permits issued. Seventy six Water Street for the same development permit was issued. Ten Water, Carlton Street for a repair to the apartment building, so there is for, I think it's ten Carlton Street for his shin, low to mental, do work on that, so.
So I assume that would get another permit, since it's been going on since two thousand nineteen. I said, I assume you wouldn't get another building permit since it's going on since two thousand nineteen. This building's been a problem since two thousand nineteen. So I don't know why you would get building permits.
You have to get one to fix it up.
You try that since two thousand nineteen, you've got nowhere. There's nothing to fix it up. Does anyone, well, this is to close it up, I think, isn't it? To close up that back interest, yeah, we'll move on. Do you know what it is?
Well, it says in, I haven't seen.
Perhaps it's worked, we need to see what it is.
Okay. Sixty four Queen Street, repair for single all family dwelling. Twenty one Water Street renovate, single family dwelling. And twenty seven Third Avenue relocated in any home. Fire inspections, fifty five, fifty seven Water Street, deficiencies were found, they have thirty days to remedy. Seventy five Queen Street, deficiency found, thirty days to remedy. One oh nine and one eleven West Street, deficiencies found, thirty days to remedy. Twenty seven Street Street, follow up inspections, all deficiencies were corrected. Following fire inspections have been issued for April twenty third, my hands building at on four, first avenue and forty three Water Street. The fire department, they respond to nine calls from the previous month. One motor vehicle poison, three alarm sounding, one structure fire, one E H S cyst, one electrical fire, one chimney fire and one rough rubbish fire. And the calls have broken down four for town and five for district. Ninth Street upgrade project easements for the storm sewer required to the Ninth Street project that currently being drafted. Current storm sewer drainage ditch that runs from Ninth Street through the World Street needs to be resized on the properties of seventy five and seventy seven. The town has an easement to the sanitary sewer over these properties, but does not include this torn water. Easements for the storm water drainage are required to ensure the town has the legal right to construct and maintain the storm water system over these properties. Next poll election, twenty twenty four, we received three quotes from from electronic voting companies and the Intellivotes Systems, fifty one hundred plus H S D and postage for the voters' letters were included in that address. Simply voting is sixty four fifty plus tax plus the postage for voters' letters. Sidle is sixteen thousand six hundred ninety five dollars plus H S D plus postage for voters' letters. After, for review of the quotes received, they've been entered into an agreement with Intellivotes Systems to provide e-voting services to the town to do for the twenty twenty four national election. Just, I don't know, Sidle is the one that won the contract with, or won the tender for H R M to do H R M. And usually, they allow people to piggyback on that. And I was surprised at the price. I, and I think the minimum price was sixteen thousand, wasn't it? I'm asking if you remember. I think the minimum, the minimum.
No, it wasn't sixteen.
Sidle, I thought, is one of the body hotels, I guess, separating the ways together.
Yeah, no, I was back on some, I was on the earth here for one, twenty years there. I think there was some financial issues. Some great. Reno training exercise, there will be Reno training exercise at the municipal office in Seabrook on Wednesday, March twentieth, twenty twenty four at two P M. All the town hall staff, except for the Joy Robinsons, will be attending the training exercises. Therefore, the town hall will be closed to the public at one P M on March twentieth. Joy are bringing at the office, plans are coming, et cetera, and training off. Training exercise will consist of a presentation from West Hans Dino on the floods that they've experienced, followed by questions and answers and a critical incident stress presentation, followed by a briefing on exercise number twelve to be held on the twenty ninth of May. Budget control, the director of finance has indicated in his statement of operations squad accounts that our open budget will be projected to be at the year end. Senior management team met on March the twelfth. Cybersecurity was discussed and a meeting of I Q personnel is being scheduled to discuss cybersecurity measures that we have in place or what we need. Budget control procedures were discussed and also timelines for the twenty twenty four, twenty five capital and operating budgets, the entirety of completion of the budget process in June third consultation. Notice of upcoming council meetings, April the eighth is at five thirty is the community grants review. And at seven P M, that same night is a capital budget review and discussion. April fifteenth at six P M, public consultation meeting for the road trail, since trial, ever so deep trail, designation by by law, followed by the community hall.
Saint Wardman, there, Lord, thank you back to you yourself, Lord of the wards. Sam and I discussed that because we're trying to get it all done, so it had five or six meetings over a week, let's get it all done, a couple of weeks. Any questions for Tom? Thank you, sir, Director of Public Works.
How's it going? Basically, the dogs, we spent a lot on the fire all past month, working on our, the capital project we have in there, in front of water mains. As we do with the water main, we did a wash hookup on the wash station, laundry stand, and the wash hookup is fairly bunkered here. And I guess they spent a lot of money to send their bunker here to have wash, so they think this is saving a lot of money, purchasing it. We had the fire also completely rebuilt and this spring we'll get it back on the roof, we'll get it back operational. The items from the fire inspection were all completed, closed the fire hall, just waiting for a couple of stuff to be done, still a bloody large company. I think most of the other things are early on the agenda, so.
Yeah. Any questions, sir? Yeah, the rest are available, so. Director of Finance, here's some good news.
Okay, so there's basically two reports, the first one is for general information and the second one is the safety of operations to date. Over the first one. So the Mount Street, top grade, we're going to talk about that later, just mentioning that the data was repaired and it's going to affect the water issue as well, which is undergoing recent this time. It's already affected the the rig study, as we do say, the numbers is always harder. So with insurance, just keep you updated on the slip and falls that seem to be occurring. The one previously recorded, what happened in January twenty twenty four, maybe give us more detail as reported to our insurance broker in the three applications that have been completed for the new year. And we just received, I believe today, the insurance. And we just received, I believe today, the insurance renewals and there looks like about twelve percent over, so it's going to get an increase on the insurance this year. Employee benefits, so the new year dental rates are up thirteen percent overall, shared towards by the town and the staff. Insurance is included, long-term disability being the same, health and dental are up in the described, so health is up eighteen percent, dental is up fourteen percent. The town pays a bigger share of the help and the dental, so it will affect employees quite that much, or will affect the town's bottom line budget, of course. Inter property tax billing change, so as you know, this will be the first year that we've added fire rate and the garbage rate to the inter bill, first bill. And so some people will be getting the entry bill the first time ever, so churches, the hospital, high school, that sort of thing, so if you ever send a notice, they'll just say, give them a heads up, just so they're not surprised when they get their entry bill to the fire we got.
And the the interim bills overall, I haven't noticed, this includes that, so there's a lot of people know that it's in the fall when they see the garbage tree, so it'd be a bit of a surprise to see it in the middle of the winter, print a newsletter or something.
And we can, we actually had that, did we put that in the newsletters? No, okay.
Physically.
Yeah.
Physically.
Yeah. On the newsletter, yeah. So the flowing property tax exemption, that's ready to go and do a notify people in prior years who've received it, just so they know it's coming up and apply for it, and of course they get more money, but since it's index calculation also, the threshold where we pay it ever for something a little bit is run by each forms. Spring adventure, we had originally budgeted certain items to go to adventure with, but since we didn't spend all of our capital we had thought, you know, extra reserves, so we don't need to go to adventure. That's that's a good thing, something regular practice, gestures which we deserve to say. Coven expenditures, just to let you know, the reserve balance at the beginning of the year was sixty eight thousand and spent eight thousand on items and the budget transfer, the mobile budget, the budget transfer in thirty thousand loss revenue, so that leaves us thirty thousand dollars in the reserve. So use up the bulk of it, so that's that's a good thing.
Do we expect to see in the fire card, the budget of cost for the bunker, the washing?
The washing machine?
Yeah.
That was an apple issue.
That's, this goes for it? It's called it, see?
Last, oh, doesn't seem we always do the.
Okay. Just set the paper.
Yeah. Yeah, we've been aggressive in our interpretation of what what council almost sounds comfortable, we can do that.
Well, this this stuff is a direct contact with the.
Yeah.
For the department.
Yep, we don't have it yet, six orders.
Is it? Okay, so.
Yeah. Right.
So that'd be in the upcoming budget?
It's in this budget.
But we'll be spending it next year, we won't have a budget for it.
It's on the books.
Okay.
It's on it.
We're down to hold it.
It's one of them.
It can go higher, it's not going to matter. So rental units, all payments are up to date, happy report. And elected officials and our employee assistance program, so elected officials are now covered under the town's employee assistance program. And I'll get some more information out to counselors and basically it's, at its most basic, it's a phone number that you can call for any reason, whether it's mental health, whether it's financial, whether it's any sort of thing that fits in with the employee assistance program. Counselors will also be able to include that in the program. And other things, completed the financial information return, which was delayed for a long time, that's the large report I do every year with the profits. And the telecellular assistance program webinar, P B S C webinar on their valuation methodology. They're not sure of the theory, their practice always align, but they, we do see more items on our assessment, this now marked as market and not cost basis. So when we look at individual properties, we can see how they value it, and they are moving to more of a market approach. Prepared to notice for property tax payers, we receive the interim tax bill mentioned before, and that's that's the end of the first report. So second report, more more interesting, exciting of the two, the years to date operations. So once we get to this point in the year, go through the fine tooth comb and and sort of see where we're at, up to this point, we've we've seen these accounts that were over, looked like we had some accounts that were going to be under, so looked like we could be coming in here on budget, now it's becoming clear that we're probably going to be over budget, unfortunately, we have running deficit the second time in two years. Still under two, under three percent, it's two point some percent of the total budget, so not not a large number, but just important to let you know that there is a deficit there. So the housing deficit, I believe, yeah, this is broad and obvious that we likely are going to be under budgeted and the information we received, yeah, we're going to be probably at least fifty thousand under budgeted on that, there's the estimates in there as well. Products and equipment maintenance, this probably won't surprise anyone, thirty three thousand is the estimated over spend, a lot of this are big Miss Plowbrook, and we've also had to spend a fair bit on our John Deere back roads. Repair maintenance, sinuscope S D P, we bought two sets of U V lamps this year, another fourteen thousand, that was mentioned, I think, back in November. Again, each of these have been mentioned individually in past reports, but it's not really come together that, okay, these overages are not going to be offset by some averages and some other places, so we are heading for a deficit, that's the main message.
Do we share that cost with this?
Yeah.
Yeah, how can we take the one, yes, that particular one?
And see, fire hall repairs and maintenance, so we did patch paving, again, this reported previously, the biggest part of that twelve thousand was the patch paving was eighty two hundred dollars, way more than we lifted this straight. And fire truck repairs and maintenance, they're kind of hard on the R, I think we brought this up before, this is going to be over and the biggest thing, seven thousand dollars spent on the smart of the brakes and service. So not like any, when we look at this, not like there's any discretionary items that we've over spent on discretionary items, these are unfortunate hard costs and, you know, I didn't find anything in there that is, not one good, this, somebody over spent. We we were over on some of our smaller numbers, on conventions and training, the council ones, expenses, but again, it's difficult with budget being here, because sometimes a certain number of counselors go to conventions, so sometimes less counselors go, sometimes more, sometimes conventions that. So trying to budget more is done with basically averaging, sometimes we're over sometimes. Any questions on either of those reports?
The the housing, I know this is twenty three, twenty four, but we already were housing problems taken.
That should be.
It's going to be, it is April first.
That should be the last, so this one, we we will expect the bill, we budgeted eighty thousand, fortunately, we under improved thirty five thousand for last year, so we didn't have their numbers, they leaked in the numbers, so we're already behind the ball thirty five thousand. And we're expecting this to be well over a hundred thousand dollars, I think, this this bill. We say this will be the last one, that's the last information we have, but.
Yeah, they did that before, or do I?
It did.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because they're probably clause and they're dependent on the property's ability to fund these items from budget.
Well, we should put that in.
Any other questions?
Go to college. Thank you, Matt. Special courses.
Danger cell and safety, ten car open in property area, susceptible to death of the area, including the basement, on dentary, they spend their time making better security, solve chief level. Since first avenue, property area, name care area, unwanted debris and equipment, small machine on site, apparent overford rush. One forty Water Street received copies of demo furnace in the site, contractors in place one, conversation is primary, just some projects still required for painting and gas, currently not stopped, all I have from the date for sunset of report this time.
That is, most are vacant buildings, just those two, yeah.
Couple of them.
Yeah. Great day. Any questions, Lord?
Little short term report this time.
That's good.
Protective services, C C C report, remote viewing not possible for the town hall and TV station, we have additional plan available for TV station to call forth. One video request for incident on March day one for incident on the boardwalk. Parking control, there was a report of a lot more type shoulder, maybe felt a sign in place. I see system, it's not really been put in place. The nurse A P required your biological ability to access the gym system for free tickets, summoners in time to be accessed. Civic address, one point eight in the NASCAR system, from discrepancy, which was a permission surrounded multi-municipal building in partner application and other discrepancy involving anger, a river and church street. Parking control, there's no issues of concern at the time, crossing area, R C A P officer tells crosswalk initiative to educate the public, I was not made aware, asked to please make light against the time someone was taking place, so I couldn't be aware as well, and we might as well, there's nothing to report. Actually, there's, we have one application for driver, one from owner operator, accusations from drivers indicate civil dispute amongst several cab owners, lack of evidence, complete accusations are enforced. New sticker covering the rates is for design, on approach and.
Well, you can see, you can see the studio on Facebook.
Yeah, it's quite, quite.
Shh.
So that's a sticker that'll be included in the back, car that'll be on the back, watching the back patches where we go, so that way it's, it shouldn't be an issue on on taxi drivers moving forward. Of course, the dialogue may have to be just adjusted to be incorporated, use of that sticker moving forward. Solid waste management, fourteen Water Street receives complaint concerning danger to be standing in the station grass, on site, they felt fearful for the safety event in the fire, with the fire infection to have any property. They said more extreme incidents took place, trying to do dumping in preparation of waste and fletchings, inside the lid, since there's been a solid waste by loss at the property area, that's none of it, these the bins, the lids on the van, one hundred and eighty degree, there's a complaint concerning snow pusher blown into the boat, issued a warning to the fire. Nine, eighty eight more extreme, received complaint concerning poor visibility, poor visibility conditions at crosswalk in the hospital, visibility reduced to sign sign to the light, five minutes ahead, air driving, dark green, special business under the signs, told them the injuries used in intensity, about fifty percent out at five o'clock, and then turned off at nine. They said their journey has been down, a little more help, help upon any visibility issues. Nine, most senior extreme received initial complaint concerning feeding a wildlife deer property, feel nearby feeding feral cats or bringing in birds and raccoons in terms of the property, they do not feel they should be responsible to implement any insurance or identity to discourage animals entering the area, feel their best society should not leave the manor or relocate elsewhere. After the discussion, they have sent a built a cleaning station to leave the manor to hopefully reduce the protection of the wildlife. The neighbor, two complaints, has also been issued a warning for a family that fly with a town steam with wildlife by law, they've also been asked by the Friends of the Royal Society to retain the duty and sheltering and castle of property, so they said it is a manor, area within order moving forward.
So that warning leads to a fine in its time.
Right.
Did you look, investigate the policies, were there after their file, I didn't see last year, been feeding a wildlife? Did you see any?
I I have not.
Okay, I I see it was before the law ended, something last fall.
Um, again, it's.
Yeah.
It's a tricky thing to do, of course, when you don't catch anything after find proof back to the fact, so again.
Just thinking of the prevention one, we have more beach.
Probably.
Let's say it's in place, yeah.
If it's something that's kind of.
No, I'm I'm intended to be, but. By the way, more authority on it.
Sure. At the very least, there has been some measures put in at the manor and a different beach station, and it does bear a difference in cooperation anyway. There is more more forward progress than I believe there has been at this time, and cooperation, hopefully this this makes a difference when they complete these issues in regard to. Down the one in this small.
Good. Any questions, Lord? You put off easily. Okay, moving on to correspondence, we got a letter here from, which is the health carry. Nuts down, I guess, think we should be providing money. Or providing grants, contributions to town organization, so I want to address it. We haven't gotten through our budget process yet, we haven't looked at our current requests, so we want to move into that meeting. Or Lisa Dolles has got the letter. Yeah, all, Will Dolles has got the letter, and we just, because we know that they do this year weekend, but I can tell them, we're going to test. Where I ask you about this. Okay, yeah, Will Dolles, they, did he contact anybody?
He probably.
Oh, I just noticed on the back, why didn't you mention that?
Yeah, they. He's only here, he's, he's the email, give a list of grants.
Yeah.
Some of that was, and he wanted, basically, he wanted this year list, and we provided because it's not public at this point, because at the application stage, council is not renewed or addressed in any way, once council does that, and when they do, the public can get what required under the act to advertise in the demands that we give, we give it too, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so Will Dolles, so that we received, that we're going to, we, as we get into our brand organization discussion. New business. Mountain Street project.
So the stuff like last report was dead.
Um, don't worry, we print through this.
So. Yeah, so if everyone prints through, I'll just go through it more, uh, focus on number two and number three, the options, but we'll actually, you know, the thirty second conversation with somebody is, we had a project that went from two million dollars to four million dollars, uh, for the course of doing this project. A lot of that, huge inflation that we didn't anticipate, very preliminary numbers that we had that were too old, and we ought to go through grant processes, this is what we run into, and probably could have perhaps some better contingencies, we learned some things through grant process, but yeah, we are here where we are. So we end up with the bit of analysis, just to make sure, can we afford this, reserves, our reserves basically are going to give us enough money to do Shore Road plus some other capital projects that we normally do every year, we look at it that way, that money's pretty much spoken for, that means everything we can do with Mount Street is for the venture, and that's a twenty year venture, so thinking of it as hanging over twenty years, any number you see divided by twenty, and that'll be the the annual effect on the operating budget, what's in the rest of the works. So the debt service ratio as well, if we do this, are we going to trigger any red flags? Are we going to? Are we going to stand out? And the answer is no, it doesn't look like we are, but we're going to be on the edge. So, we will still just be barely a greeting in debt service ratio, and that's the percentage of our, our own source revenues that we put towards debt principal payments every year. So, we're going to be able to afford it. The main thing to take away from this is that tie is for the end, it's for future spending. So, if you're not going to run it again, probably just won't do it. Anyway, we get the point. It's always the end, it's future spend, and that's, that's a shame, that's, that's the problem, it's the practical, future operating budgets. So, first option, not accepted in ten years, forces would require that, we'd lose the one point seven million in rent on the, that would just be out of the door, and that's a difficult thing to get. Number two, proceed with the project or break it into two phases. So, we've made the, are from King Street to West Street, and we don't do that right now, we call that phase two. So, that causes some problems. The contractor, of course, won't look at that and say, I'll state in my bid prices, if you're going to cut the project nearly to half, I'm going to call my prices about significantly, at least ten percent, maybe ten to fifteen percent. So, there we end up with an emphasis in sure, it's more affordable at the time, but we better do the whole street eventually, and instead of driving the whole possible street. And when you do phase two, those costs are going to be again even higher, and we don't have grant funding for it yet, that would be a roll of the dice to get the grant money. So, we, staff didn't recommend that. Number three, staff did recommend, and that's let's proceed with the project, with the project, with the contractor did, but with no changes or with small changes. And hopefully, the changes are small enough that the contractor doesn't see that we materially changed the contract, and we'll sit to their unit prices on the remainder of the contract. And that's where we end up going to schedule C, and it's where it's all the schedules. Schedule C shows the potential savings, and all the schedule is probably the more perfect one to look at. So, potential savings, two hundred and six thousand dollars. Really, the question for council, maybe that's not worth it at all, maybe doing all, all those cuts powerfully and asking Tom to renegotiate with the contractor, see the whole, their other prices.
Twenty six, seven percent of the total product.
Yeah, we're not talking big numbers here. It's really difficult when you're doing a whole street with continuous sewer, water, storm range, it all ties it together. We don't even want to break it up, well, for another reason, we want to redirect the sanitary sewer down King Street, instead of running it all the way down Mount to go station four and paying the electricity, the pump, so it's a little bit awkward to see if we can get, get it all done. So, it comes down to then looking at option three, looking at doing the full project, and of course, the whole decision is council, it's all just council.
I think that's the treaty, it's bigger than else. But several years ago, Tom, for this, we should have delayed, because maybe forward will settle down prices and that, and they're not coming back.
No.
They're not coming back, instead of do standard, that's the idea.
And now we seem to be into the world of labor shortage, that everyone seems to say, that is not going to waste, that is potentially wrong. Contractors getting people they need, their load being tied, because there isn't, there is.
That is some of the reasons that we only got two bids, because our normal contractors that usually bid on, on this stuff, they couldn't get the labor, and couldn't commit, they hadn't enough labor to do projects, and it just didn't bid up.
And you said it worked with contingency, why you never had a fifty percent contingency on a product?
No, we, we didn't have a fifty percent contingency, and then of course, I talked to the province afterwards, and said, well, I guess since you had only preliminary information, you could have gone on twenty five percent. It's less than now, we wish we had.
And once we do this, where do we find the money for Church Street, well, we're in King Street.
But we'll also have new numbers to apply for grants.
So, we're actually buying.
Instead of what we have now. Keep them on a fifty cent dollar grants out there for PD cap to doing the pre-design and for King Street, the whole design. So, that should be those good numbers, and we'll learn lessons of, we, we know that even when you apply, it's going to be at least a year, two, three years. We need to throw inflation on top of those numbers, plus contingency on top of those numbers, and hopefully not end up in this scenario. And seventy three percent funding, maybe King Street isn't going to be years, if we get it right, we can get it during.
Yeah. And we're relating the federal grant, was it right? The grant, that we're relating, huh? And one of the grants could be almost worth seven, is that?
That's federal and provincial, it's the ICIP Investing Canada Infrastructure Fund, forty percent funding from your fed, thirty three percent funding from the province. And fortunately, it was on a number that was too low. We did get our seventy three point three percent, but it was on a preliminary estimate that was much too low.
And if we're going to do this this season, we start it now, right? We can do the grant in winter, next year.
They make the, yeah. I would expect would be April, you know, you correct the grant, I tell. The date is in March, for the contractor to.
Yeah, we're going to, tender, tender, and a, for the day?
Sixty days, we're almost to sixty days.
Yeah, we're almost at sixty days, so if council committee decides that we're going to move forward, then I'd ask council if they would consider going into, council, special council, need, ask the team to approve the tender, so that we can do all more. Because once that collapses, we either going to renegotiate, or we're going to re-tender, we don't have time to re-tender, because it's not my deal. I think we're going to get like, and, and change.
There's not going to be much cooperation from them if you re-tender. If you did fairly, we got sixty days.
And our project manager looked at the tender, and thought they had numbers for us that far up, so it's not like, we're not, we're not going to be closed.
Yeah.
That's the way I want to have, but costs are higher than we, than we have now.
A lot of lessons to learn in this project, this particular project.
Play everything on hold.
Well, it didn't help us. We have a lot of stuff to do too, even. It's easy to press and say, okay, they got the contract, but we have a lot of notices, we have to grow up, a lot of door knocking to do, and we've got to talk to the school board, we've got to talk to the region, we've got to talk to the subdivision that's in there, set everything up for their travel in a note, like, this is a major project, so town hall and public works, they would often do a lot of work to do too, and talk to the contractors, which we need to get on right away.
You might not have much trouble with the bridges up there, because they can expect this word.
Yeah, well, they're going to be happy, I mean, for their day to day travel stuff, right, they have to make plans for their hiring stuff, so.
Well, that's, that's questioning, Mount Street, land, gravel, road, like, you're not talking just gravel road, you're not talking street, gravel, hand right, you know.
For the asphalt ends.
Yeah.
Which we blooded ourselves after that.
Yeah.
Yep. Just a few things that I was, I was able to pick up, and we could do what happens a little while, so.
But overall, there's not much to do.
It doesn't, and they, I called them directly, asked them, and they didn't care if we did it. They actually said, you want to do the topsoil, we're happy, this is a dooce for us, so, great, and I'll leave it to her for the end.
Just us. Do you expect three point eight million or three point six million? Something like that, or four, or?
More, just all our, all our reserves. But still, we, I want to be that, obviously, they don't know exactly how much we're going to put in the capital budget, but the bulk of our reserves will go on, yeah. We add another two hundred thousand to our reserves itself, and we get gas, actually, because of our reserves every year, they go up by three hundred and sixty thousand every year, we get to do get replenished. But, yeah, pretty much Shore Road, plus the other projects we're likely to do, were pretty much two of our reserves, this is going to be, this is going to be four. Those are the wrong numbers, so no exact.
The delay is not going to do it.
I don't think the, the next one before, don't believe predators are going to do that.
Right.
And.
It's not hard to say anything.
Yeah.
And we have a sudden set clause on the funding, that's twenty five.
Yeah.
They might, might certainly, first, 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 twenty twenty five. Yeah, it's been this grant, so you got to do it now or risk losing that funding.
Twenty seven million.
I guess it's a bit of a fear that we don't do it, pretty tender, that we're going to get one tender from the, the other chap, so.
Yeah.
One and a half million dollars higher.
And, and re-tendering, we can't re-tender on the same project, because obviously, that looks, looks sneaky, it looks like you've done something underhanded, you've just, so the low bidder would immediately say, wait, there was an RP, we put in our offer, we basically had a deal, you can't go with anybody other than the lower bid, unless you're going to back over this project completely.
Anybody want to spend a few, what do you know, girls?
Yeah.
Really, I have a choice, we have, what you know.
And there's going to be more, you know, down, if something happens.
Well, it's going to be more. No way you're going to.
No, you're going to be forced to spend it because if something happens, grants will be going a little bit less.
But I just keep looking, year five, now Church Street, whatever, yeah. Three, only ten, twelve hundred dollars for two hundred yards. But that's, that's discussion down roots.
Yeah.
So, the, the reserves is the only, I have a problem with this, it's exhausting, all those reserves. I mean, I know we're selling mobile home, and those are other parks that maybe we need to sell to replenish that, those, kind of, those reserves, like, Mound Street, are we really going to do Mound Street, that's over a million dollars to do Mound Street? Are we better off to sell that building for, you know, two or three hundred thousand and put that back in the reserves?
Well, that's kind of that discussion.
You know, I have two or three hundred thousand, I would probably not be doing reserves, like, I say, I definitely, definitely sell it.
But yeah, the, 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 the site, we were hoping to have to, for this.
For this?
This park, we, we'd have Bora, and we'd do Bora up to twenty, twenty years. That's what we did, when we done the wastewater project, yeah, that was a two year, four hundred dollar project, and so we performed over twenty, twenty years, right? So, so then it was back in twenty thirteen, so we're, we're down there, halfway, eight dollars off.
So, schedule B shows you should be increase in the operating budget spend after we have. So, you can see I have a list of current, and then all the years, that shows how much we're committed to right now, all our debt repayments. This year, two hundred and twenty nine thousand. If we do the project in twenty twenty six, we would have ended up sending two hundred and sixty thousand, but if we do this project, it'd be around four hundred and eleven thousand, an additional hundred and forty four thousand dollars a year. Yeah, I guess, yeah, that's an important number, I guess, should go ahead. Hundred and forty four thousand dollars a year to operate the budget, that's the one more reset tax rates, that, that's it.
Well, we take a look at our capital budget, we'll be getting into that. We have to raise the stuff, especially the stuff that runs oral for, I believe that gives us a brief, some readings to.
Basically, we discussed that, that, as senior man, that, that, that's going to be, training is going to be, we're going to try to prioritize it to what we need, not just, what needs to be done, but just do what we need to do best, get it rest. As we bump all those down, 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 right?
Boy, everybody was quiet when I got to that, I'm like, no, I don't think we're acting up. No. No, we've been discussing this project, and I, and I'll come together, and I guess discussion, we are not allowing that there, or.
So, the, it's going to be done in schedule C, is the spot where what do you want to try to save? You want to save, change the format of the material on sidewalk, the mid to the sidewalk? Do you want other works to do the Mound Street, like landscaping, other works to do the plan of the driveways? Those are really the only, the only options that we saw.
And those numbers include labor.
Labor, yeah.
Yeah.
Two hundred and six thousand, that's a good job.
And you.
So, the, yeah.
Do we have time to do this?
Well, except for, some of our other projects, it's probably going to, well, hold.
Hold some time, yes.
And then the sidewalk was three and a half meter wide concrete, that would be wider than our normal ones, but what came up in our actual transportation plan, or do we go narrower, and do we go in concrete down to asphalt? Those are going to be options that I, I put in, showed the savings. Two hundred and three thousand, eight hundred dollars to do it as is, and then there's the three options of how it could be done.
So, you take that two hundred and six thousand plus interest, viable over twenty years, no money?
Yeah, uh, ten thousand, up interest and twelve, thirteen thousand a year.
Yeah. No money, this whole, the entire project. Okay, so the question is, I guess, do we, we want to worth the entire contract to these folks, or do we want to do it? Let's go, I'll send them see. Turn off and, and, and. Yeah.
We're still not giving option three, lose Q three.
Yeah, I wouldn't recommend breaking into two phases, really, I think there's a lot of extra costs added, and.
With option two, if you want to do private, do you see any potential conflict between all the new infrastructure and the old infrastructure?
You're going to have a little bit of fun.
You're going to have a lot, yeah, that's what I was trying to, that's really.
I feel they're going to want an extra for the, for the doggies they're going to have to do there, compared to the easy doggies they had on that King, on King Street. Just have that, just fish.
Yeah, well, that's, yeah, well, they throw an extra load on all that old stuff, where we're digging it up all the time, breaking.
I see you have four inch water main there, and six inch water main there.
Yeah.
The whole project, the whole six inch water main is coming out, it's going to be eight inch tall, which.
True.
So, this, you don't have time, that old six inch main is there, which is the white series PVC, it's not even cast iron, so it just changes everything, everything.
And if you're talking eight inches, it's six inch, all you got is six inch.
So, you've got more volume now pushing on that.
But you still only have six inch.
That's right, exactly.
So, whatever you boil it, it's just six inches, it's more water.
Yeah, then it's height and all, but that six inch is still going to be there, so.
Yeah.
When we did this, we pushed this, as far as like four fire flows, this you got the school, another commercial building is right there, so that was a pitch and we could bring all that, all that stuff.
Well, I'll make it a motion, I don't make motions in the chair very often, but I can. But I'll make a motion that the, we've walked into treaty, including schedule C, and that, if you're comfortable, that you guys can do the work.
We can.
It's not going to end here without work.
I will say, I know, Tom told you, the topsoil we're using, we're actually going to stream our compost pile down the pit, which is included in that process, so we're using our own topsoil for this project on Mount Street, so that's, that's, that's what we're using, is the topsoil.
So, just for clarity, that's the Mount Street landscape departed, saving thirty two thousand, land, driveway started at the same fifty four hundred dollars, and then it's kind of a separate decision on the side.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And all second.
Yeah, well, yeah, I was gonna mention the sidewalk, what are we doing there? I mean, just delaying?
In, in ten years' time, or in fifteen years' time, what are you gonna, what's the next people gonna be saying? When, when, longer projects.
Yeah. Well, remember when we were getting away from concrete, so around the sidewalk, because they were twisting and turning and.
You're gonna do it to a.
Yeah.
Doing two meter concrete.
Concrete is last long it works out. But that's.
And that's what, all the concrete is done down Warren Street and, and around the rest of the town.
Yeah.
So if you're saying concrete, then so it's, if you don't, if you say it three and a half meters, no savings, if you get down to two meters, then you save the sixty-eight thousand and hundred dollars. Yeah, the two meters for the concrete, but to me, a four million dollar budget, a hundred sixty-eight thousand dollars savings, that's barely a lot.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, uh, yeah.
But you, you wouldn't go from three and a half meter down to the two meter, Mr. Anderson?
Yeah. Yeah, and I'll put that in a motion. To the, uh, concrete, to Mount Street Landscaping, Mount Street Blend Gravel. And we take, and take that, take the test. Second, uh, you still second that?
Yeah, yeah.
Any further discussion on it? Done? All this is David's, yeah, I think he needs, so immediately after this being, we have a final council meeting to approve, so let him get it done. Yeah, okay. I'm going home. Three months, so I want to request, or. We didn't need any funding for it. Uh, they tell me we're different funding, we're different ten million, you know?
Yeah.
Said, see, see what's happening, run the problems. Bring wire to nine million last week, you asked, uh, something like that, you said eight, nine million, we asked, we're not big enough.
There's a problem.
We look at it three places. Is there a new round of funding coming out from this?
I don't know if it's gonna be, but I assume that the problem is gonna be, probably, in the, in the year. The problem, uh, issue this money out, we'll see how, how the results are. Try to receive some results, depending, depending on other companies, but, uh, that's just my guess, but.
And you mentioned that it may be open to any proposals that may come, I'm aware of one that's coming. So there'll be a proposal coming, all around housing, so.
Yeah, well, they.
Down streets.
So that may give us an opportunity to discuss it, and we'll go more of a funding slate.
Just, uh, we need to, now, to, to know, uh, the architect, whether we say, okay, does what he brings home, or. You can't, you can't keep him hanging, you know, he's hanging, and he could, he could be doing other, other work for other clients, so.
I'm gonna make that motion, that we can have.
Any discussion on it? Gary, all those, David, say hi.
Hi.
Me and Hades, and I was gonna speak to Tom after this meeting, of the proposal, but, still, I have to, so, thank you very much. One forty-three, first avenue. Should we do our house? I just, I got one question for the director of public works, and that's maybe not heat pumps because of many roads.
Yeah.
I have seven roads, my house, that are here by all the doors, and all. Uh, do you have two heat pumps?
Yeah. Yeah, so, a lot of the water line, I read the building, and there's no heat out there, it's just, it's just sitting on the blocks, and as long as people, I believe, would never really seen too much, I don't know, probably, I have to poke the hay in that heat. So some of the heat, like, one of the heat that pour on too.
Yeah.
The regrowth, the plumbing, get it all above, which is another issue, I should never thought, I should have put it in there, and I didn't. Yeah, if you do the, what heat pumps, if we gotta do electrical upgrades some sort, whether it's a sub panel, or replace the panel in the building. I was kinda looking at it more of a financial side of things, that was, what to do. If you're looking at like a nine thousand, nine thousand BT, a heat pump downstairs and upstairs, but, it's just how, the top of the house broke up, so you gotta, you enter the, enter the home, you enter the porch, there's a door and a door. So all your water is in this first part, so this cold room, as they call it, with the washer and dryer, then you enter the kitchen, and then you enter the living room, and then there's a set of steps off the left, takes you upstairs to the other two bedrooms.
The other three steps.
Yeah, you have to walk through one bedroom to get to the other bedroom, we got steps, they're, they're the old steps, so if you slip, you're going down all the way. They are narrow, so, it, it is a hard one to put heat pumps in, just have it set up, you would have to have three, maybe four heat pumps to do it properly. There's the ducted, ducted heat pump, and then you just add cost to it, I don't know what the ducted heat pump cost on up here, and about a minute split.
It's a hot water furnace.
It's a hot water furnace, yeah. Oh, yeah, 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 no doubt.
It was the other, yes, uh.
Me don't pay the oil bill, do you?
Yeah.
No, because the, the efficiency of the township won't give you grant if you burn less than five hundred meters of oil previous year. So just, had that conversation, go ahead, put a, or a ducted heat pump, it is thirteen thousand dollars. But I could only put a two hundred panel. And he's been heating his house with solar heat pumps, he didn't blow up, he ran, because he burned less than five hundred. Which he didn't know before he put it in, I was happy when he got to. That stipulation did, and.
What if, if it's hot water, what about, it's probably too expensive, that, that bad, hot water heat pump? You could look into that, that you make them, I don't know how efficient they are, but it's your air water, I guess, what they call them, so. Just quoting, so, you might have to.
Two of them.
Turn domestic, not feeder corner. A hot water tank. We have a, we like a hot water tank there, so.
Is it now?
Yeah, now, so you would have to, we're actually, we just replaced it a few months ago.
Yeah, but, yeah, I thought, here we're trying to provide housing, and it could be limiting housing.
It's a difficult one, because, you know, the old houses does need upgrades, but then, you don't wanna put people on the street.
It does.
That's the hard part about it, so.
But we're not, but we just.
I mean, we're, we're limited to five percent of the street.
Exactly, yeah.
And we bought that property, used to have, we had the property down the road, so.
We didn't buy it, did we, it was attached?
No, no, we bought, we bought, we bought it.
Yeah.
It was more an object to us, and we wanted because to have, to have that, in case we were spending here or whatever. It was a private sale, we also, I mean, I didn't, I didn't have some price, we were taking for it.
And we bought, we bought it because we are afraid that we end up with a. What's that word, that's called? We have, we have the property.
The, the, the.
Yeah, we have, yeah, so. That's what it's our brain is. Maybe, maybe you find it a little bit more on that.
Yeah, I can, so they do, I did buy the heaters, they do have heaters in there, they get pretty huge, they have three of them, so they, they are warm enough. But the other, the other thing is the roof. Uh, can they, can they approve a part of Tom Peter moving?
What's that?
Can they approve the roof to go, so I can get somebody hired?
I don't know, I don't know why not, I mean, I put it together as a package, but that, I mean, after, after the proof is back, you're gonna approve it. The roof, they have the roof done, so we can get that done, because that's probably, with the energy being under the spring, so it's. Have more time when the decision on the furnace.
Well, we can't allow them to leave.
Well, yeah.
If it's not the range of your bed.
No kidding?
Yeah.
Don't make that motion.
I made that.
Twenty-five thousand dollars.
That's what I'm saying, dude.
I'll say it.
Yeah, but yeah, we have to, they deserve.
Yeah, so, yeah, I'll get, I'll get two contractors to look at the, the situation.
All of the favors that must stay out?
Hi.
Ninety-eight Carroll Street. What do you wanna do with that, sell it, rent it, uh, walk in it?
Many homes, I think, we, I thought they had property, that could solve it, with the extension itself. We had the land for it.
But we get fifty hundred dollars a month for that, the rental? I just don't have it for.
I think we could go and walk it out, or. Listen for it.
Yeah, you might, it's just locations, not vast locations in the world, you wanna get more, we probably will recover ourselves, but do we have any idea what we gotta do?
I don't have total cost, I told you, if you're, you're.
Yeah.
Anyway, basically, we're so good.
Very long, is it?
Yeah.
Oh, well, you can, you can, you're more later.
Yeah, I mean, ba- basically, there's more that gets, needs to be done, and so, if, um, I guess, the question. Was, what, what number we spend on finishes, if, if we're gonna rent, we should, um, put. Low, low rate finishes, or medium or high. I thought, as, as I went in the middle of the city, grade finishes, if, for example.
My thinking, Tom, was that, the intention was to make affordable residences for a new family, or a single mother, or, or as they be. To my mind, those medium finishes should be, whether we sell or rent, either or, I mean, if you wanna buy it as a, as a start home, and then. Take it to the next level and add finishes and increase your value, and do that, it's up to you, but. We, we are just in the business of trying to get someone else a home.
Yeah. And I'm, if I was working that way, I'm not gonna be Carol Mary of Canada, so.
No.
That, 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 so.
Not agree with you, just even though it's progress based board, or search engine based board, that's kind of what I was getting at, so. And the if it's, yeah, basically, yeah, that's, that's what I, what we need to know, that we can get rolling on things.
Well, we're, if, if, we think we're selling it, then it'd be a question, they could tell us what, what, no matter, given that.
It was all in there.
Yeah, exactly.
No, I just want to clarify occasionally, I mean.
We need the money.
I'll make a motion to have a council that will sell the property.
Second, did, did we ever, did we have documents, you know, in my view of the?
I was just gonna say, until it gets finished, we can't really have a, a vehicle or a couple wheel, we're in crazy, I tell you, this is what it's worth. It's all one call, it just doesn't finish, right?
So, although they, they understand what you're going to, they, they.
But it'd be that, that, the finish thing, and they.
So we'll take this to the regular schedule council meeting, now we've talked to, asked about this.
I think it was our intention, sir, Mr. David, it was our intent, well, to make instructions to the realtor, when we come to that one. That not go to a contractor, or to, to actually go to someone who's going to use that home.
Yeah, we could, we could put, we're off of that caveat, and we'll sell it. Out of the fence, I don't want, just wanted to put it, because basically, it's, that's what it is, is for affordable. Uh, housing in the broad term, with the fourth lives.
Yeah.
And, uh, something that's affordable, it's a young, young family that's first daughter or whatever, it's. You know, I mean, this is senior, or senior couple or whatever, and it's affordable, so.
So I guess maybe that meant the question, if hypothetically, you gave access to hundred fifty thousand dollars, that's not affordable with all the people anymore. Although it's low end now, and we look at properties right now. Are we, if we get a particular, we get a family that's looking for affordable housing, we, or how flexible are we gonna be on that? Something to think about.
I think we need to guide them through the realtor, we need to talk about whether or not it's able to be resold, or all those sorts of things.
Yeah, I, I would, I think, at least for the term in there, that if you buy this, your home, you'd better keep it for your, your, wherever you live.
Well, I, you have to be your background and check in the negotiations, if they counter your offer, or bring, make an offer that's different than our list price, less than our. Then have to decide, okay, but based on this, you'll have to own it, keep it for X number of years, then it, and. I don't think we're gonna sell it to an investment, somebody for an investment property like this.
No, you did buy that quite quickly, you bought this one off of them. And it was a number of companies, you should have absolutely.
Well, that's another question, too, if you're really, you're expecting income from it, would you entertain the, uh, purchase, uh, agreement, uh, with C then? Is that what you're looking for?
Well, at least the purchase, yeah, I guess it'd be based on credit issue, you know.
Because it's for a financial institution, we're just trying to provide.
So once you get somebody in the building, it's very difficult to move, even if I ask you to find out the rest, I put that. Very difficult. Okay. Uh, that's the last, we have a quick camera, Jim, so we have to throw you in.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks. Oh, the, the, the I C.
Yeah, just wanted to get a meeting together for that D I C. For us, yeah, just to get up there, we need this. Yeah, we're all about the common meeting and stat, so, we're asking about the building, well. I said, I think you say my own in the building, where you go, right?
Yeah, exactly, yeah. And this used to last year, so, I guess, we wouldn't figure that out, maybe we might have ten, half a thousand.
I think you did it, yeah.
Yeah, well, that's, we got us, yeah, it was, uh, I, I. For all, I don't need, so we got, now I'm serving.
Yeah, that's. So we need to go to, so. Are we gonna take that too?
It's very, it's very, it's actually, I don't know, I looked at it, it was under the camera, the number that wanted, it was an information that shared.
Here, so. And we didn't think we, we didn't have a motion to make, yeah, we're ready, but, yeah, so, we didn't have a motion to adjourn.
She's doing a comment, when I pulled the whole place on line on Big Hill. The realtor, uh, came to look at it, for the. The, 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 I said, you cannot buy, uh, any area without, for, under a, about.
There's a house in Marshalltown, what I call can't even.
Yeah, it's been for sale for a long.
It's listed for a hundred fifty thousand dollars. Oh, yeah, no, but it's only twenty by twenty, it's near where Rob show, uh. No, it's near where the old path and turf was on the right, when you make that turn and go up.
Yeah, well, it's, it's on my, yeah.
Yeah, well, everybody looks, they're seeing our stuff. But it's like, and the one at Mount Pleasant, that they told me needs an entire lot of water, a hundred sixty, sixty watt house. Just the values.
And I didn't charge you that much, but I quit.
Yeah, and you need it for value, and, or, yeah.
That's, uh.
So, I, I will move to go on camera, because I can talk about that, is that. What is, about the person you was gonna talk about, or the, what was it, for?
What we're gonna, no, well, well, that's a thing, I thought that was for food bank, was that?
Yes.
Is that what it was like?
Yeah. I just.
What's the answer?
Are we adjourned?
Sir, are you in camera?
We had a motion with Carol, we didn't get there. Yeah. We have a motion with Carol? We're saying on the same stuff, yeah, okay. All of you, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn? Second? Sure. Any discussion on that? Motion passed. Need to ride home, council?
No, special council.
Oh, okay, yeah, sorry.
I was saying four million.
Uh, make them, uh, call the meeting to work, special council meeting, you guys have today's date, quarter of the day. All of you, say aye.
Aye.
He needs, the item on the agenda is to approve the Mount Street project, three point eight less what the town is going to absorb. Including concrete sidewalks at two meters.
Basically, it's to warm the concrete.
Yeah.
Tender to, uh, textures.
Where I made it, and committed all, I'll make a motion here, yeah.
Excellent.
Sorry, any discussion on it? Yeah, there, yeah, exactly, all of the favors, say aye.
Aye.
He needs, in the public hall, that's on your backs.
They're gonna, they're gonna think it's just something, they're just gonna like fade, but it's a whole shit, like that, and there.
Oh, it's, infrastructure that has to be done, yeah.
Yeah. We're gonna blame Will because he was near.
Yeah, motion to adjourn?
Some move? Sure.
Sure, okay. Good night.